People working on Main Street have damaged the lines, so the lines are out.
Okay.
On Main Street, but they're going to repair it.
That's why they've been out for a while?
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen it last week.
All right, mics are live.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Commissioner, if you don't mind, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amazon.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Wilson.
Here. Again, it's always refreshing to know that we have on our desk Commissioner Reese, who don't need a notice to give our invocation. And after he do the invocation, we ask Commissioner Collins to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you don't mind, please stand before our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we are truly thankful to you for this beautiful day that you've made. Lord, as we gather here this evening, we invoke your presence to be here among us, that you may guide us in everything that we say and that we do. Lord, speak to our hearts and our minds, that we might truly work together to make this a better community. We thank you for how you continue to bless this community, and we pray, God, that you will continue to bless us as we come together to conduct the business of this city. And we give you thanks, and we give you praise in your precious name, and all those who love the Lord said, amen.
Could you please join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Collins, and to our audience, thank you all so much. Okay, before we have approval of agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Just for clerical purposes, we'd like to add A1A. It's similar to adoption of resolution, your item number two, except the resolution will be reading slightly different with the board relating to the CRA.
That resolution, CRA 25, is that?
Yes, sir, what I just passed too. Yes, just for clerical, just for clerical reasons, yes.
Any additional, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner, you heard the add-on here. What's your pleasure?
What was the add-on again?
The resolution.
The resolution I submitted.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Collins. Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Amazon. Yeah, make sure he have a copy.
Yes.
The City General Fund tax increment contribution of $110,020, interest of $9,600, and then a transfer from reserves as of September 30th, 2024, of $656,016. The expenditures in this budget, the highlights of the expenditures are the insurance for property, liability errors and omission has an increase of 10% in the budget. The projects that are in this budget are the sidewalk improvement of $100,000, demolition of $150,000, and building renovation program of $100,000. And there's restricted reserves for new CRA projects of $467,231. Any questions? Okay.
All right, item 1A. A resolution of the Board of the City of Beauclay Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, providing for the adoption and funding of the Community Redevelopment Agency budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026.
All right, that's the information you received a few minutes ago. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Reese. Commissioner, any comments on this resolution? Any concerns, any thoughts? If not, yeah, if not, call the roll.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
And Agenda Item 2, adoption of resolution relating to fiscal year 2025-2026 CRA budget, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Beauclay's Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, providing for the adoption and funding of the Community Redevelopment Agency CRA budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026.
Okay, what's your pleasure on the resolution?
So move.
Sir.
Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Collins. Any comments? Call the roll.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, if your finance directors maybe take one minute to explain the difference in those resolutions, why necessary to add the other one, just so that everybody would know.
Okay, the commissioners serve on the Board of the CRA. The CRA Board has to approve, adopt the budget prior to the city commissioners adopting the budget. So last year was the first time we've ever done it that way. We actually did it a week prior. There was some other items that they needed to have a CRA meeting for, so we put that resolution on there, on that meeting. So the Board adopted it in August, like 15th or 14th, if I'm recalling correctly. There was some debating back and forths whether or not we needed it, because we've never done it just last year. Well, we got confirmation from legal at the peak of the hour today that we needed to adopt it, so I felt like that we needed to have two separate resolutions again. One, the Board adopting the budget, and now the city commissioners adopting the budget. So that's why we added it on to this agenda, to make sure that we crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is my servant as Board Director for the CRA and Commissioners.
Right, correctly.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Any comments, questions? All right. All right, anything else for the good Lord, Mr. Manager, for the CRA? All right, Commissioners, anything? Okay, all right, well, thank you so much. This CRA meeting is adjourned, thank you. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this special meeting to order for September 4, 5:45 PM. Madam Clerk, please call. If you don't mind, let us stand for the invocation of Commissioner Reese, if you don't mind, blessing us once again, and Commissioner Collins, if you don't mind.
Father, once again, we come to you, Lord, to say thank you for this day, and thank you for the privilege that you give to us to serve this community. Father, as we come, we invoke your presence once again to guide us in what we say and do, that whatever it is, Lord, it will glorify you. We thank you for the staff, and ask that you bless each and every one of them with the need, whatever they stand in need of. Bless this city and bless this time we will spend together. We ask all in your name, and all those who love the Lord said, amen.
Could you please join us in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese, and thank you, Commissioner Collins. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Amazon.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Wilson.
Here. Okay. Any add-ons?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. All right, so approval of agenda, please, by my colleagues, anybody?
So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazon, just second. Second by Commissioner Collins. Okay, all right, call the roll.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye. All right, we'll turn it over to the manager.
Well, yeah, yes, yes, sir. We just need to receive and file our public notice on page one. Maybe have a motion to receive and file the public notice.
So move. Make a motion to receive and file.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazon, just second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Collins. All right, call the roll.
Amazon.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right, that's finance.
Okay, on page seven of your agenda, I'm required to read this memo into the record. In accordance with the Truth and Milage Term Bill, the commission shall hold a public hearing to adopt a tentative budget and oppose, proposed mileage rate. As stipulated in the term bill, the first substantive issue to be discussed shall be the percentage increase in mileage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget, if any, and the specific purpose of which Avalorm tax revenues are being increased. We must explain these numbers for the record. And if you'll flip to page three, under that, you'll see the chart that's titled Percentage Increase Mileage Over Rollback Rate, fiscal year 2025-2026 rollback rate. Rollback taxes are $4,112,011. In fiscal year 2025-2026, proposed taxes are $4,383,595. Proposed increase in taxes is $271,584. Percentage over rollback rate is 6.60%. Physical year 2025-26, rollback rate is 6.1366 mils. In fiscal year 2025-2026, proposed mileage is 6.5419 mils. Proposed increase in mileage is 0.4053 mils, and percentage over rollback mileage is 6.60%. Now, we have to explain the tax increase, the purpose of it, and the proposed increase in taxes being used to purchase capital equipment and for public service, public safety services provided by Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Then if you will flip to Agenda Item nine, we will go over the highlights that are in the budget. We're going to start with the general fund. We have a balanced budget of $15,567,090, both revenue and expenditures. The highlights for the revenue, Avalorm tax rate is 6.5419 mils, same as last year. There's an 8.6% increase in property tax value. State revenues increased 2%. Included in the budget is $133,691 CDBG grant for the funding of the code enforcement. There's Gobert Solid Waste administrative fees of $348,157. There's Storm Water Fund administrative fees of $97,039. And there's a transfer from reserves of $2,603,787. Highlights for expenditures, property liability errors and omission, auto and workers' comp, there was a 10% increase. There's a 7.5% increase in health insurance. There's a 7.5% increase in the employees' insurance deduction. There's an increase in Palm Beach County Sheriff's contract of $113,334. There's a 3% inflation impact throughout this budget. There's a 2% COLA for all employees who make over $75,000. There's a 3% COLA for employees who make less than $75,000. There's a performance bonus in this budget. Personnel changes. We unfunded the Human Resource Administrative Assistance position. We've unfunded the Customer Service Representative position. We've unfunded the Director of Parks and Recreation position. We've unfunded the Park Ranger, but we funded the Recreation Manager's position. There's a reduction of overtime in various departments of $172,929. Capital in this budget is completing the renovations of the City Hall of $140,921. And currently, the bulletproof glass has been ordered for the front. So if you're wondering why we're just putting a portion of the money in there, that's the reason. Landscaping of $50,000. There's a printer for traffic controls and signs of $11,995. There's an eight-foot trailer for streets of $10,000, and there's a Z-track for buildings and grounds of $18,000. We have funding in here for aid to private organizations of $50,250. Oktoberfest, there's funding for that of $55,000. Christmas giveaway, there's funding for $35,000, and Fourth of July funding of $35,000. There's a transfer to the CRA of $110,020. That's the general fund's tax increment contribution. There's a transfer to the marina to cover the cost of the marina, the maintenance of the marina of $245,923. There's a transfer to the golf course of $226,623. And there's a transfer of funds to the Lomax Herald budget of $60,386. Any questions? If so, if you'll turn to page seven. We just briefly went over the CRA in the last meeting. They do have a balanced budget of $851,316. Would you like me to reread this for you, go over it again?
I don't think that would be necessary.
Okay, if not, okay. All right, moving forward to page eight. Infrastructure surtax. We have a balanced budget of $5,44,248, both revenues and expenditures. The highlights in the revenue is the one-cent surtax. Now, that does sunset in December of 2025. We're anticipating to get $413,235 between October and December. We have interest of $35,000, a balance brought forward of $4,596,13. The expenditures in that budget are the projects that have been approved by the Infrastructure Committee and the City Commission, a new pool of $866,703, renovations to Lake Shore Civic Center of $184,832, splash pad of $250,000, Lions Park improvements and playground equipment of $479,604, Butts Park bathroom and other renovations of $711,388, and Hand Park bathroom of $484,13. In the marina, there's the balance of the money that we think is needed to finish the bathhouse, to finish the paving in the main area of the park, and engineering for the 500 section of $11,95,772, floating dock renovations of $315,379, and Lomax Herald pavilion renovations of $32,020. And at the golf course, there's $76,302 for improvements at the golf course.
We still have the splash pad as a project? I'm just asking, I don't know.
We're going to go back before the Infrastructure Committee and ask them to move those funds back into the reserves to be reallocated to other projects, and then we'll bring that back to the commission for commission approval. But meanwhile, that's what has been approved.
Right.
Okay? Restricted reserves for new infrastructure projects is $448,235. On page nine is the American Rescue Plan. We do not have a budget for this year. So if you flip to page 10, this is General Capital Outlay. We have a balanced budget of $4,822,985, both revenues and expenditures. The revenues that are in this budget, we have local option gas tax for transportation projects of $139,140, FDOT grant for airport projects of $2,279,975, FDOT grant for road resurfacing, that's the Seven Streets, and that big closed today. We'll be bringing that back before the commission to approve the award. That's $264,275. And we have an FDOT grant for road reconstruction. And let me define that a little bit more clearer. That's for Northwest First Street from Gator, Northeast First Street, from Gator Boulevard to Northeast Avenue H, Southwest Avenue C, and Southwest Avenue D from Main Street to Main Street Loops. And that's $1,072,494. We have a FORDAP grant for Airport Park for $200,000. We have a land and water grant for Lions Park of $476,577. We have a Resilient Florida grant for vulnerability assessment study of $129,775. We have a LPA grant for pedestrian bridge of $221,174. We have interest of $10,800, and we have a balance brought forward of $28,775. Those expenditures more defined, those revenues are defined more, broken down more under the expenditures. Airport facilities out at the airport. Airport facilities, out at the airport, a new facility, a maintenance facility of one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. At the airport, obstruction removal of two hundred and fifty thousand. The airport master plan update of three hundred and twenty thousand. Pedestrian bridge improvements of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Roadway resurfacing, the Seven Streets, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Roadway reconstruction, and I'm not going to go through the list, but it's Northeast First Street to Northeast Avenue H that I just read above, a million, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Vulnerability assessment of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Lions Park improvements, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Airport park improvements, two hundred thousand. Veterans Monument of ten thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. And reserve, restricted reserve for transportation projects of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Any questions? If none, if you'll flip to page 11. This is the Stormwater Utility Fund. We have a balanced budget of three million, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars for revenue and expenditures. Revenue highlights, we had, the commission approved a fifteen percent increase in stormwater assessment. That increased estimated to be sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. The stormwater assessment that we have in the budget is nine hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant of three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Interest of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ten, and a balance brought forward of a million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. In this budget for insurances, we had a ten percent increase. Health insurance, seven point five percent. The employees' insurance deduction went up seven point five percent. There is a three percent inflation cost embedded in this budget. There's a three percent COLA, there's a bonus. There's reduction in overtime of thirty thousand. There is no capital. There is one project, Northwest-Southwest Third Street Corridor of five hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. And there's restricted reserves for new projects, for new stormwater projects of a million, eight hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Any questions? If not, turn the page to 12. This is Garbage Solid Waste Fund. They have a balanced budget of three million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, three million, five hundred and forty, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, both for revenue and expenditures. Revenue highlights, the commission approved the three percent increase. The estimated amount is thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Residential rates go from twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents to twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. That's sixty-nine cents monthly. Commercial rates increased from eleven dollars to eleven dollars and thirty-three cents. That's a thirty-three cent per cubic yard rate monthly. In recycling, increased from three dollars and eighty-nine cents to four dollars. That's an eleven cent monthly increase. Insurance went up ten percent. Health insurance went up seven point five percent. Employees' insurance deduction went up seven point five percent. There's a three percent inflation in this budget. There's a three percent COLA in this budget. Performance bonus is in, is in this budget. Red, re, redo, we reduced overtime in various departments of eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. There's no capital. The personnel change was we unfunded seven part-time refuge collectors. There's a transfer to renewal and replacement for equipment of four hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. Any questions? If not, turn to page 13. This is the marina. We have a ba, a balanced budget of two million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, both revenues and expenditures. The highlights for the campground, the revenue that we're estimating is one million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. There will not be a transfer to fund the campground. We did go up on the rates. It was approved on June 16th by the commission. The highlights for expenditures is the insurance went up ten percent. Health insurance went up seven point five. Employees' deduction is going up seven point five. There is a three percent inflation in the budget, a three percent COLA for the employees, performance bonus. We reduced the overtime in the Marina Campground by sixteen thousand. There is no capital, and we're transferring revenue. We're transferring money to R and R for re, for equipment replacement of fifty thousand. The golf course revenue is estimated to be four hundred and five thousand, fifty dollars. There is a transfer from the general fund to the golf course of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars. The golf course did go up on their rates this year. It was approved by the commission on June 16th. There is a transfer from renewal and replacement to purchase equipment for thirty-nine thousand dollars. Insurance went up ten percent. Health insurance went up seven point five. Employees' health deduction is going up seven point five. There is a three percent inflation in the budget. Personnel changes. We changed the cashier from a full-time to a part-time and added a part-time groundskeeper. There is a two percent COLA, a three percent COLA, a bonus. We reduced the overtime by fifteen thousand dollars. And the capital purchases are a used bunker rake of eleven thousand, five hundred, a used triplex mower of twenty-seven thousand. The marina has no revenue. Therefore, the general fund is transferring money to the marina of two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. The marina expenses are the increase in insurance of ten percent. The increase in health insurance is seven point five. The employees' deduction increases seven point five. A three percent inflation, three percent COLA, performance bonus. We reduced the overtime by five thousand. There is no capital purchases. Lomax Herald Pavilion revenue is estimated to be five thousand. The transfer from the general fund to the Lomax Herald Pavilion budget is sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. We are going to come back before the commission, probably in October, with a proposal to increase the rates of the Lomax Herald Pavilion, the rental rates there. There is a increase in the insurance of ten percent, and there is an inflation cost of three percent in this budget. Any questions? None? Turn to page 15. This is a revolving loan. The budget is balanced at six hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, both revenues and expenditures. The highlights in the rev, for the revenues is interest off of mortgages of thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And just to let you know, we have nine mortgages that we are holding still, that residents are paying on. The transfer from reserves is five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. There is an increase in the insurance in this budget of ten percent, a three percent inflation, and restricted reserves for new projects in this budget is six hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Any questions? If not, I'll turn it back over to the clerk.
All right, moving to item 10. Approval to update the current position classification to include a three percent increase for each pay grade to remain competitive in the market and approval of a bonus based, based on performance.
What's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Amazon. Comments, commissioners? All right, call it a roll.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, if you will turn to page 24, Agenda Item Number 11. This is a budget comparison comparing 2024 to, 2025's budget to 2025, '26. In 2024, 2025, we adopted a budget of thirty-seven million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. And the budget that we're bringing before you now is thirty-five thousand, thirty-three million, three, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
It's thirty-five million, not thirty-three, right?
Yes, thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five million.
I mean, thirty-five million, I'm sorry. And the other one was thirty-seven million. And if you look at, you can see the comparison by each fund, what they went up and down.
Increase of two million, okay, Malibu?
Now, we call for public comments, if there's any. There being none, let's move to item 13. Adoption of resolution relating to operation stabilization reserve funds for fiscal year 2025, 2026. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, related to finances, providing for authorization to use operating stabilization reserve funds to partially fund the general fund budget of the City of Belgrade, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026, providing an effective date.
What's your pleasure?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Reese, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Amazon. Comments by the commissioners? If not, call it a roll.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Item 14, adoption of resolution relating to proposed millage for fiscal year 2025, 2026. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, fixing the proposed millage, millage for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 on all taxable real and personal property to provide for general operating expenses and declaring a tax levy upon said property.
What's your pleasure?
No move.
Motion by Commissioner Reese, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Amazon. Commissioner comments? If not, call it a roll.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Item 15, adoption of resolution relating to tentative municipal budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, relating to finances, providing for the adoption of and funding of the tentative municipal budget of the City of Belgrade, Florida, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, and ending September 30th, 2026.
What's your pleasure?
No move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazon, second by Commissioner Collins. Commissioner comments? If not, call it a roll.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, I have to read back into the record the percentage increase over the mill, millage over the rollback. Fiscal year 2025, 2026, rollback taxes are four million, one hundred and twelve thousand, eleven dollars. And fiscal year 25, 2025, 2026, proposed taxes are four million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Proposed increase in taxes is two hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. Percentage over rollback rate is six point six zero percent. Fiscal year 2025, 2026, rollback rate is six point one three six six mils. And fiscal year 2025, 2026, proposed millage is six point five four one nine mils. Proposed increase in millage is zero point four zero five three mils. And percentage over rollback millage is six point six zero percent. And that's all I have.
Okay.
All right, our announcements of a public hearing to be held September 15th, 2025, at 5:30 here at City Hall, relating to adoption of final millage rate and adoption of final municipal budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Thank you. I'm going to open the floor up for any comments. I will start by saying, Mr. Manager, to you and staff, I mean, there's no question because my colleagues like me, I'm, we probably can cite these numbers a lot even looking at the paper. We've been going over it so much in the last three months. But I want to say to you guys, what an excellent job. You guys got us through this excellent job and kind of tired of looking at these numbers again. But good job, good job to staff and you guys, all the department heads. You guys did an excellent job. Commissioner Reese, you've been recognized for any comments.
Again, thank you for, for the hard work. It was a tough, tough job.
Yeah.
And we, we know that some people are happy, some people are sad. But again, it's something that we have to do to make sure that we are balancing the budget for the city and also meeting the needs of our citizens. So again, thank you for the hard work. We'll be looking for you to stick to that budget. And I think the thing that I keep emphasizing, and I will continue to emphasize it over and over again, we need to look for some additional revenue sources.
I agree.
Look as for as many grants as we possibly can so that we don't have to go into our reserves next year. And, and I know we did this year. But I do believe that through some hard searching and looking, we can replace that through, through grants and other resources. So again, I just encourage you to stay focused on increasing revenue, holding down overtime, and sticking within the budget. Thank you so much.
In regards to Commissioner Reese's comment, reference grants. Mr. Manager, is the goal of your staff to bring something before us in the near future as it relates to grant firms out there?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Collins, you've been recognized.
Good evening, everybody. I know that crunching numbers are not always easy. However, again, just like Mayor said, we have seen these numbers a million times now. But we truly thank you so much for all the work that you put into it. We know it was not easy, but we do, we do know that it was the best for the community. And just as Reese stated, it may not have pleased or been feasible to everyone. However, you know, us, again, as I stated last time, thinking outside of the box, coming up with, you know, different ideas and seeking those additional funding to put back into would be plus for all of us. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, first, I would like to thank the staff here, Mr. Finance Department, for working on this budget. Most of all, I want to thank all our employees out there, the guys that work out there, and Mr. Johnny on sanitation, building and grounds, and the ones in here. We cannot do it alone. This is a city, this is a team. We need to continue to work together. And like Commissioner Reese says, and Mayor, and all of us here, I don't think nobody disagrees. We, we have to think outside the box and help ourselves out, you know, with revenue, businesses, or whatever we have to do, grants or whatever. So all I ask, all our leadership here, put our thinking caps on, and let's work together where, you know, we can try to help and benefit our community, our city, and, and our employees. So thank you for everything y'all do.
So Mr. Manager and staff, you heard from my colleagues. We're all saying the same thing because we really appreciate what you've done, what you're doing, what you will continue to do to make Belgrade a place where everybody want to come and live with and raise their families. But it all started with you guys making it happen. Thank you, and this means adjourn.